Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the work session for the Portsmouth Planning Board for May 8, 2008. We have one item on tonight's agenda, which is item one, a draft revised zoning ordinance for Article 9, Site Development Standards for Parking and Loading. And reading that in, I will turn it over to Rick Tinter. You could lead us through it. Rick?
Yes, thank you. Well, this, we had been working on the parking section and there are a number of policy issues that really need to be discussed. We, I took some stabs at it and we've had some discussions with the staff and we just really need to air this, I think, a little bit more broadly. And so we thought we would bring to you some fairly significant policy issues, some more significant than others, but five issues that we identified as things we'd like to talk about tonight. And I guess the first one, and one that...
Let me take the first hour?
No. Is, deals with the Central Business District. And Portsmouth has a history of, at one point, having had no requirements in the Central Business District for off-street parking, and then about 13, 12, 13 years ago, started instituting a parking requirement and at the same time, sort of gave with one hand and took away with the other, took with one hand and gave with the other, in that it has a parking requirement, but it also gives credits for structured parking, which cuts the parking ratio in a third, and it also allows a buyout, a payment in lieu of the parking at a fairly low, I mean, it doesn't seem low to a developer, but 5% of the one, you know, roughly 5% of the cost of a parking space gets you, buys you your way out of a parking space, and it's 5% times a third, so it really becomes like 1.67% of the cost. So the issue, so what happens, and so what we're wondering, and looking at lots of options as to what to do here. And so just in the first page of this handout, just outlined four questions. The four questions are: One, should private development in the Central Business District be required to provide off-street parking? And B, if that answer that question is yes, then what are the appropriate parking ratios? And then C, if, again, if off-street parking is required, should you still allow an in-lie payment? And if that's the case, then what is the, how should the fee be determined? What should you base it on? And these are all, I mean, it's one of these questions where there's no right or wrong answers. It's all, it's all policy questions. And just take you through, maybe if they just take you through the outline, and then we can go start back up at the top. So in terms of should private development be required to provide off-street parking, this is something that lots of cities do in different ways. Many cities totally exempt downtown parking, downtown from parking requirements, completely. So that was one, that's one option you could take, and that's one option you did have until mid-'90s, the way you did take it. Some communities exempt or lower the parking ratios for downtown, and that is in effect what you have done since 1995, 1997, is you've cut the parking requirement in about a third, although it's hard to see because it's listed in there as an intermodal credit, so it's not, it's not right in the table of parking requirements. Then one option that I had been talking about some months ago was the idea of exempting first-floor non-residential space from the parking requirements, because being that the kind of thing that kind of generates foot traffic. And then there's a question of residential versus non-residential. So there are many different options, but I kind of, the basic question is, you know, before 1995, 1997, you didn't require it. Many communities consider off-street parking in a downtown to be a public responsibility in order to support that lively foot traffic and dense development. And there's a question of public policy, your choice of public policy versus how you look at how developers have been treated. Again, up until 1997, developers were treated one way. Since 1997, they've been treated a different way, and now we'd have another policy change, and so there could be some feelings of inequity. So that's kind of one big general question. So then the second question again is what is the appropriate off-street parking ratio? And as I mentioned, the existing zoning really is, cuts the parking ratio in about a third, if you look at it carefully. Your zoning standards should support a walkable downtown, so they shouldn't be probably the same ratios as you have in a place that you have to drive to and drive from one place to another in a suburban area. You want to provide a balance between overparking and underparking, by that I mean providing too many parking spaces, which deadens the downtown, or providing not enough, which has people driving around in circles looking for a parking space. So you want to have that question to address. And so that question, one part of that question is, do you have a good ratio right now? Does it feel like there's a good balance right now? And then the final part of that is, do you want to look, treat ground floor differently from upper floor? Do you want to treat residential different from non-residential? Those are kind of policy questions as to how you want the downtown to grow. If you wanted to give more of a benefit, for example, if you wanted to reduce parking requirements more for non-residential in order to encourage upper-floor office space, where the market seems to be pushing toward residential, that would be one choice you could make. The third question is very simple. If you require off-street parking and you've decided an off-street parking ratio, should you allow a buyout through a payment per space that you don't create? And then finally, if you do that, right now, there's a really strong incentive for the developer to pay that fee, because it's so low relative to the cost of providing the spaces, but it's not nearly enough to provide any, for the city to provide, it's not meaningful to the city. It's not a meaningful revenue stream for the city in terms of creating those replacement parking spaces. So the question is, is, are you just charging a developer? Or do you want to charge the developer in a way that will help you build parking spaces to provide those public spaces? And should the amount, again, vary by land use? So that's that, and I guess they're all kind of overlapping questions, but I'd certainly be interested, you know, and let's start with that whole concept of, I'm sorry, David?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it might be helpful if perhaps Lucy gave an overview.
Oh, that's really good, yeah, yeah.
How we do it. And the only other thing, we tried to correct the typo. 95 to 97 is when we had no parking standard.
Ah, okay.
Prior to 95, we had a variety of mechanisms, none of which are worthy of really...
95, 97 was when there wasn't any. Okay, I got it.
The current ordinance requires you to establish a baseline for properties in the downtown. And the way we find out what the uses are are through building permit applications. And we only have information from '97 on building permit applications that are submitted, so not all properties have that information. And that is now 11 years out. We have new owners, changes in properties that may not have come in under a building permit application. It gets increasingly difficult to find out what that number was, what those uses were, especially when you're working with new owners, maybe the old owners have died, there are no records. So that has become increasingly problematic. But to create that baseline figure, you have to do the investigative work to find out what the use was as June 1, '97, look up any variances that may have been granted, because you're allowed to add that in, and then add any conforming parking spaces. That doesn't mean any parking spaces. It means ones that conform to the ordinance, to size, to how they maneuver, how they enter onto city streets.
Conforming as of '97 or conforming as of now?
Now, we use it, conforming as of now.
Although ironically, the standard is roughly the same.
And that establishes your baseline. And then you look at the new use that's proposed to come in and say, you have a baseline of 10, and the new use requires 13 parking spaces. That difference is known as the unmet parking need, and that is what, those three parking spaces are what the unmet parking need fee is based on times three. So it's $1,297 right now, adjusted annually on the anniversary date of the adoption of this section. So it's continually going up, but it started out at 1,200, four or five years ago, I think, when we changed it from 500 to 1,200. But still, it gets increasingly more difficult to establish that baseline, and I think that's what we wanted to bring out, the way it's written right now.
Yeah, I think our message is, in the long run, this approach is not sustainable. The records, the record-keeping, it's far more intensive. We need to look at the approach and see if there are other better ways of doing it. It seems like this is a good place to start that discussion.
Ms. Roberts?
Yeah, I guess I wonder, in terms of the big picture, what are, if Deb Finnegan or, you know, other city staff have thought about sort of our overall transportation needs for the downtown, both in terms of cars and other forms of transit that we might move even more into? More bicycles, for instance, or buses, or whatever the other so-called intermodal? Because I feel like it might be helpful to have a sense of sort of what's our, what is our long-term likely future in terms of cars? Now, we've got the current garage, we've got the new garage coming online. You know, how full will that be in X number of years?
Two new garages.
Right. So, you know, I wonder, sort of what is our need versus where we are now? Where we're projected to be in 10 or 20 years in terms of cars versus other forms of transit? Kind of a big question, I guess.
Oh, that's a great, I had that same question.
I think we can certainly involve them in that, and I think that's what this discussion's about. In partial response, it is generally accepted, and Rick, you can pipe in if I, probably even with a real good source, but you never in a downtown would do a one-to-one, because then it would be all parking. And the idea of a downtown is to build up, have walkable, livable cities. So a ratio of, say, five to one, i.e. one space serving five uses, well, you'd have cars circling endlessly trying to find that scarce resource. So I think in many ways what you're doing is trying to figure out if what the current balance seems is a good, what goes into adding that balance. And I think one key one is the city council is really looking at public parking facilities.
Council Dwyer, and then Mr. Coviallo, and then Mr. Coker.
A question based on what Dave just said, and Rick, maybe there are some rules of thumb. One of the things that strikes me is, because we do, one of the reasons why we have the vital downtown is the residents, people living downtown. And so I'm curious about how ratios might, rules of thumb ratio might vary in towns that have a living downtown as well as other downtown uses versus downtowns that might be largely business or retail uses. Are there such...
Well, again, this varies from city to city. The, I was looking at a, at some information about San Francisco, and I'm not sure how recent the information was, but it was all about a debate to eliminate off-street parking requirements for residential uses, because in that case, business uses, offices were taking over the downtown and they were losing their residents, you know? So it was the opposite situation of what's happening here, where most of the development is residential here. In that case, most of the development, probably because of the higher, much higher densities or something, was commercial development, banking and so forth, or insurance or whatever. So they were actually looking at eliminating residential off-street parking, but not eliminating non-residential off-street parking, and other communities have, just as I say, looked at eliminating all off-street parking. So I think it really is a, again, it's not, there's no right or wrong answer. It's going to depend on what your current situation is, your future, the needs that you're going to have in the next 10 to 20 years, and where the development in the downtown seems to be going. There's no, I don't think you can come up with a rule of thumb for that.
If I could add one thing to that, which I think will bolster it. What we've seen in our developments that are coming in the downtown, where they have a residential component, they like to provide the parking for the residential, because I think it increases the value, and they tend to rely the other uses will be a little more out on the market, seeing how they provide it. So what we've seen is a strong desire to provide parking, but primarily for one segment.
And one thing that's been happening in various parts of the country is that there's a guy named Donald Shoup, who's been doing a lot of research and writing on what he calls the high cost of free parking. And it's, one of the things that's happening is separating parking spaces from the development. In other words, requiring in zoning that you sell the parking space separate from the space that it's serving, so that you can, somebody could buy a condominium and buy it with no parking spaces, with one parking space or with two parking spaces, and they would pay different amounts for that. And so it's like separating it out, so that you, so people, so it's not automatically factored into the cost of what it is. And that's kind of, some communities are experimenting with that, trying to, you know, trying to separate those two pieces.
Interesting. Mr. Coviallo?
Hearing what everybody's said so far, and I have an open mind, I think that I don't want to punish residential, because I think that their use kind of fills in the, you know, it's the shared thing. The businesses during the day, the residential at night, get multiple uses out of the same space. And I also want to, for economic development, don't want to punish the retail. It's the non-retail, non-residential that should be paying. It's people like me, who have a business downtown, that I'm not providing any economic development. I just like being downtown, but I, my business requires spaces. So it's people like my business should be, should have, I think, the highest impact fee or parking requirement. Just more of a policy kind of field.
Mr. Coker?
I just wanted to clarify something. David, you said a five-to-one is a ratio and a one-to-one ratio. What to what?
Our zoning ordinance requirements for a use, so in a general business district, you require...
So in other words, if it's a restaurant, it has one ratio. If it's a retail store, it has another ratio.
Whatever that ratio, whatever that number is, it has to provide it.
Okay, all right. And it's based on square footage or some, or is it just the use?
Variety of standards, but it's use-driven.
Okay, I want to make sure of that.
I don't know if you got that. If, say, a restaurant requires 20 spaces. Right now, our thing is that you only need to provide 20 divided by three spaces, spaces, because we have a three-to-one.
Yeah, if you do it as a structured parking type thing, yeah.
So Dave was saying, one-to-one would be you'd have to have 20 spaces, a five-to-one, you'd have to have four spaces.
And I think, thinking about the downtown, the thing that's important about this is that right now, you have an ordinance that gives you that three-to-one credit or one-to-three credit if you're doing structured parking. But in fact, that's really all you're going to do in the downtown, so you're only going to do structured parking in a way, because of the high cost of, high value of land. So why not in the ordinance have two columns, one for the Central Business District and one for other places, where the required ratio is, there might be three parking spaces per thousand square feet for office out on Route 1, and one parking space per thousand square feet for office in the Central Business District?
Remember, we had that discussion on the portwalk, they had 1,000 spaces, and I think because it was...
Yeah, that's, I was trying to look back to that.
Okay, and I remember, I remember that was brought up.
As a downtown resident, I will, I will get my biases out early. We want free parking. Wherever you put it, it's okay. Now, I think, I think it's very important, I think Council Dwyer's, I think it was your point that, about why we're a successful downtown. And I believe truly, I really do, it's because of the residents. If you go to a Manchester, or you go to a Concord, or a Milford, or a Nashua, and seven o'clock at night, just take a look around, see what you see.
Well, that's exactly it, because the, I think the people in offices make the downtown, add to the vitality of the downtown during the day, and the people in the apartments make it, add to the vitality at night. So that's what makes it a day, you know, day and night, or an 18-hour downtown, or whatever it is.
Either the mixed uses.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I would amend that, because, you know, we just had some statistics last week. I wish I'd have brought them, about how many times the garage was filled over the last year. I think it was 75, which is, you know, considerable up. And a lot of it's at night. So it's not night, we are, we are a nighttime town. You know, I never have trouble finding a parking place during the day, if you just know where to go, but at night, sometimes you literally cannot. And it's not residents at night. It's residents plus. And to me, that's, that's the challenge we've got, because we don't have that shift that you're talking about, Tony, you know? We have the night plus night, and that's, I think we have to really take that into account. And that's when a lot of our, you know, our businesses really do business. Increasingly, retail, as well as restaurant, it's really sort of a double night problem. And that's what I don't think we have figured out how to solve. The escalation of the number of times the garage has been closed is, you know, it's not just incremental. It's really a steeper curve.
See, that's, I think, the information that Paige was saying, would be helpful to us to see that data.
And I could say anecdotally, at parking in the Parrot Avenue lot, it used to be that you could get there as late as 8:30 in the morning and find a space. You'd better be there by a quarter of seven now, I mean, a quarter of eight, or you don't have a space. And God forbid, you should have to leave during the day.
I think it was three years ago that the garage was only filled about nine times.
Exactly. So it's escalating really rapidly.
Which is a good problem to have, by the way.
I was just gonna say, apropos of the residential development, that I think that takes care of itself, because it's, units without parking are very tough to market, from my firsthand experience.
So, I would agree. So as we're drifting down to the bottom of this page, I guess, you know, what's the feeling here? Is it, pay for space? Is it, do we need more data? Do we, you know, what's...
I like the three-to-one.
And I think if we could get the data, that may support that that is in fact in the right... Council Dwyer, I don't know if you have any more data that you've seen that may lend itself to either?
No, but you know, John, between John Frederick and Deb Finnegan, I think they can provide us, I think they have hourly by hourly, you know, so we can, there's a lot more that we could look at to actually figure this out.
And it would be neat to see over the last five years, where the economy, quote, "slowing down." I don't think, I think Portsmouth or the Seacoast is kind of in a bubble. I think we'd continue to grow.
Or it hasn't felt the same effect.
Correct.
Who wouldn't want the papers reporting a bubble in the Seacoast?
No, we would. So, Mr. Coviallo?
I really like the idea of the first floor being exempted. I don't know what others feel about that. Since the first floor in the downtown has to be retail, it seems to me that that was one area I think would be very good for economic development, continuing. I don't know what anybody else feels.
Well, you know, I, when I first heard that, I wasn't in favor of it, but when you add that to the attempt to try to maintain small businesses, it, to me, it's the mix. And I know it's not necessarily the business that's paying, it's the developer or the owner of the building, or I don't know quite how that's playing out in different arrangements, but I think we also want to make sure that we're not disadvantaging the small independent business with the parking, whether it's retail or some other use, a commercial use. So that, I would support.
I can tell you anecdotally, almost bar any example, that most people feel that it's actually the tenant that ends up paying, even though the way it's written, the benefit goes to the owner of the property. Spent a lot of time looking at what you can do about that, and it's a little difficult. So it's a good policy question and discussion as to exempting the first.
Yeah. Is there a way to even further legally, maybe this is Bob, credit the small independent business and not necessarily credit anybody who has first floor?
Yeah, you know, I think you can, but it becomes difficult to administer, the more complex the scheme is. And our scheme is already very complex. So certainly theoretically, you could, you know, tinker with it to achieve that result, but I'm really worried about the complexity of it.
And imagine something, this happens where you take, where some, you might divide up a large space or consolidate several small spaces, then you'd have to be starting, starting to look at those ratios again. If, you know, if, you know, a large retailer went out and the owner of the property decided, well, I'd like to have four small retailers instead. It's going to be, it would be, that could be a very complicated thing.
I know, except if we could figure out, you know, this issue's coming up again, and I know, I think we were all fairly unanimous before in feeling that we didn't want to exclude, you know, larger businesses or whatever, and we wanted to find ways to incentivize the smaller independent business. There aren't very many ways we can do it. You know, I don't know if there's some way, without being too complicated, that this could be a way to do it. Because that also builds our character.
You know, we tried to do this, Dave. Maybe two years ago, there was a lot of discussion of how to try to do this, and we didn't, did not come up with anything.
Although it's like the large retailers not coming to downtown and trying to do something. Yeah, I remember that.
It's so hard, because as soon as someone changes hands, if they sell the property or...
This discussion is good, because it's really going to take your input and then staff getting together to try to craft something. The model we have, you can't keep it, so we've got to come up with something else, but the discussion is, what are the uses we like? And I keep hearing here, the mixed uses work. We want to protect the vitality we have, do no harm, but also address the need. Because what we can also say is, when that residential property in the downtown is developed and they're providing that parking, you're losing some of that flavor too of the ground floor, because the parking could be on the ground floor, perhaps in the back, perhaps it took away a little space. There's a lot of policy issues in this.
Could there be sort of a rotating assessment or a fixed-time cycle assessment as opposed to the changeover of property assessment? I don't know if that makes it more of a nightmare or less of a nightmare.
Problem is, then it's not really tied, then, right now it's tied to the building permit. That's really what does it. And so you don't, there's no, you actually, I'm sorry, I'll take that back. A lot of communities do have, instead of doing it the way we do it, they do it through a parking assessment district. They have a special district where there's an assessment, or a business improvement district. And as a matter of fact, one of the things that there, a lot of communities that don't have parking meters in the downtown, I mean, you're not in that situation, but a lot of communities that don't, are, institute them and then use that, dedicate that revenue to a parking management district, or to a public benefit district that improves, that addresses improvements in the downtown, because I think, you know, the same professor I mentioned, Donald Shoup, who wrote about the high cost of free parking, wrote another article about the ideal municipal revenue source, which is parking meters. And, you know, it's just a constant stream. And so the, there is that way to do is, again, to separate that from the development process and have it, you know, tied to what's going on in the downtown in terms of actual uses. It's a different, you know, it's a different system. You're taking it out of zoning and putting it somewhere else. I'm not, we haven't even looked at that. I think that the, you know, one of the issues we want to look at is that issue of, that has been mentioned about the exact, what our need is right now, and how it relates to supply, demand and supply. Because the system right now is based on, essentially, on... Because the system right now is based on, essentially on studies that were done in ninety-seven that looked at the, at the numbers and the ratios and came up with those numbers. And so we, so it's important to look at the, look at them now. One other kind of, um, little anecdote is, is there's been a study of, I can't remember which city it is. It's a California city where people actually looked, watched cars driving around the downtown. And it was, again, the situation where you had free parking on the streets, so it's not your situation here. But they found, I can't remember what the number was, but it was well above fifty percent of the cars were going, cruising around looking for a parking space. And so the, just the idea of charging for parking on the street and charging at a higher rate than you do in your lots, which is what you do very well, is, is a really good congestion management strategy.
It's just pathetic.
Did you, Ms. Gaffert, did you have a question?
I was just going to ask whether it's the experience that we've, that zoning and the parking policies have been incentives or whether they, they really are so attenuated from the actual user in the end that the, you know, the zoning requirements are somewhat ineffective in terms of achieving the policy goals that you're outlining here. That notion of a parking district in the central business district seems a little bit more able to be incenting in the way people have been talking about.
I agree. It, it has some immediate appeal to me. It feels like a grown-up way to do it. It feels like if we're moving from being a town to a city, that that's how a city would do it and that it's appropriate with our density. Also, you know, what you said about parking, I mean, we're, we're better and better able, equipped to deal with parking in a very sophisticated way. And it's a great revenue generator. We're moving in, in, in this budget to have, not having the overage go into general fund, but moving to set up a separate parking, um, cost center or whatever the right terminology is. But, you know, it, it not only pays for all of our parking stuff, our, um, you know, garage debt, our coast buses, and it adds a million and a half to the general fund every year. So just think what we could do if we...
I know, that's what scares us. I, I just, I don't know where this fits in this whole thing, but, but I think the city has a, a bad habit of taking a parking space here and a parking space there and it's only two spaces and we'll give this space to the taxis and, um, the Parrot Avenue lot lost a half a dozen spaces to, uh, the, the police cars that come to the city court and, you know, those kinds of things. And I think the cumulative effect of that is, I think the loss of a parking space ought to be treated like a death in the family. I mean, I think it's something that's, that is, you know, you're going to die a death of a thousand cuts here. And I don't know where this fits in, but I think it's something that needs to be recognized because we've lost, and I've often said when I don't have anything to do, I'll find out how many parking places we've actually lost in the last, pick your timeframe, two years, three years, just by virtue of the city council saying, well, we'll give, you know, the, the bump outs on the, the hotel there and you'll lose three spaces and the city council gives it to the, to the taxis and, you know, that sort of thing.
Most of those have been because of safety, you know, honestly, and when you think of, I mean, we just approved a bunch of them. But the, the safety issues of pulling out of some of those streets with the kind of parking there.
But, but the reality is, and you're, you're probably right, but, but the impact is the same. You've lost a parking place. So I think that needs to be part of the piece of the puzzle too.
Probably, probably it goes along with that is, I mean, it's, I think the study, you know, a study of the entire summary of everything would, would tell you whether you're ahead or behind where you were in nineteen ninety-seven.
Yeah, yeah.
Relative to what?
Yeah.
Yeah, just to give you an idea, nineteen ninety-seven, the study assumed that Parade Mall was going to be parking.
Okay.
So you have to sort of keep in mind that ratio again.
Mr. Covial and then Ms. Gaffert.
Um, getting back to the department's concerns about what they have now, it's not sustainable. I, I thought I heard from Council Dwyer was, can we tell, can, can there be like an announcement that you, you know, downtown property owners, you have two years to provide an assessment to the, to the department on your current parking situation. To start, because right now it's nineteen ninety-seven and we're losing data on what nineteen ninety-seven was like. So we say, you know, if you don't do it in the next two years, nineteen ninety-seven is now going to be two thousand eight, two thousand ten.
We recalibrate.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the thing, it's recalibrating, I think the nineteen ninety-seven, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, the nineteen ninety-seven was essentially, um, in a way it was kind of grandfathering what was there.
Yeah, the intent of that date was to say everyone prior to that, if you benefited from a variance, a special exception or whatever you had, that was your initial credit. And the whole purpose was to determine that credit when you figured out a baseline.
In other words, so, so that you're not, so that even today, you don't necessarily, you're, you're, what you're charging people, if they do, if they choose to provide a fee, or if even if they develop and they decide to build the parking spaces, you're not making them come up to any type of standard. You're making the increase come up to a standard, right? So that, so they, you, if they had a deficit in nineteen ninety-seven, they're allowed to keep that deficit. So it's not a, that's quite kind of what the complicated part of it is. It's a, it's a, the deficits are maintained forward. And if you didn't have a deficit, you don't get a deficit. So it really treats people differently.
Yeah, for example, that's how Parade Mall would get a credit for what they had in ninety-seven, even as they develop. But the saving grace there is you can't have a large development without parking. So there was a very good dialogue. Remember, you're saying whatever you had in ninety-seven was your baseline. So once you document that, even as you're developing the site, you still have that base.
Ms. Gaffert?
The only thing I was going to raise is, as we're thinking about the central business district, we also may want to think about the Islington Street corridor. Because all, you know, as I think about areas in the city that we're seeing developed, I mean, you know, Borthwick Avenue and what may happen there, there's probably going to be onsite parking. But as we're looking at developing Islington Street and after that study, that's probably going to be an issue.
Mr. Covial.
Felt like I didn't, um, I'll be more clear. Dave, do you see a problem in implementing, trying to get a new baseline or trying to ask people to do the assessment and get it done?
It's labor intensive. It may not, it may not be the best, but we're trying to get from you a variety of approaches and things that can be thoroughly vetted. This one was meant to begin to address because there was a whole lot of discussion of how much parking we needed. And I think we're finding out that we've outgrown that and we've got to perhaps look at other ways of doing it.
Um, it seems like we've now identified at least three challenges. We have this night plus night, as Council Dwyer calls it. Um, uh, the, um, issue of the administration of this incredibly complex system. And then, now I don't remember what the third one was. Um, but we've got some challenges here and, you know, maybe there are other challenges that we haven't even highlighted yet. But it just seems like if, if we can kind of consider those, you know, I mean, this issue of the administration, it does just seem incredibly arduous and...
And I guess my argument is maybe the benefit that you're getting from, from this incredibly complicated system isn't, isn't even...
Right, exactly.
So that you, you might be able to...
And what, well, I guess part of it is what are we trying to achieve too? I mean, revenue stream is one thing. You know, we're intermodal transport, pedestrian friendly, the balance between, I don't know. It seems like meeting a lot of needs.
Uh, Mr. Coker, Council Dwyer and then Ms. Covial.
Question for David, is there, it seems right now we're looking at this kind of in a, see if I got this right, the micro, where you have a given business that requires X amount of parking. So if we go to the big picture, how could you do a big picture review of the same, the same principle but blown out for the whole?
District.
District, yes, thank you. Is that even possible?
It is. And, and actually that was what was done, it was done back in nineteen ninety-eight. Looking at the, looking at the entire parking supply, looking at the entire square footage of the downtown, comparing the two, and, and then what you have in the downtown is like a giant shopping center, you know, with, with, uh, you know, different kinds of stores that operate at different times and, you know, the movie theater that operates one time and the church that operates, you know, it's got all these things going on. So you, so you get this kind of a blended parking ratio. So you don't think about, you know, one per two hundred square feet for a retail store and one per two hundred fifty for office.
That's exactly what I'm getting to, is a blended.
Right. So you're, so you're, what you're really doing is you're just, you're looking at the entire, at the entire, um, overall system. And, and essentially you're deciding whether it works. So, so the question about seventy-five days per year, are, are all the parking lots and parking garages full? And you decide at what point, and there are, there are various, I don't know the standards off the top of my head, but there are, you know, there's percentage occupancies that are, that are thresholds that you're not supposed to go above. So when you get to a certain point, you say, okay, that was time to build some more parking supply. So if you did that study and you found that you were at the cusp, then you know that either all future development has to basically provide parking at the same ratio.
That's exactly the point.
Or, or the city has to do it.
Are we okay right now?
Right. So that's what we need, okay.
And that really sort of is, is where that answer could come from would be a big picture review of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I think we also, my thing is, is to make it real simple, here's the supply, what's the demand?
Right.
What, what do we have today? What, you know, what can we do with, with the Parrot, I mean, what's our capacity? Say, say we...
Parrot Avenue lot?
Well, I'm just saying, what I'm saying is, you know, you've got all the, all these municipally owned lots. Can, can we add floors to them? What, what is the match right now with city-owned property that, that we can max out with parking?
Yeah.
Now, I don't see downtown doubling in size. I mean, that's just not a reality. So what do we have ideally, what, what could we get to? And then I, I think it, it kind of dances around the question you just asked. I think that's true of the question.
Yeah, and, and make it more like a current use sort of thing. I, I don't mean use, I don't want to use the word use because, um, the, the idea being, forget the whole use thing. Do it on square footage and treat it like the Barstool tax or something like that. Because if you figure that, um, you know, commercial, the commercial folks don't pay a relatively higher portion of taxes for value than do residential. So making, putting the whole public obligation for parking on the, on the, um, taxpayer seems a, a little much, especially given the out of balance that we kind of have in our city and how our city is used. But it seems like you wouldn't have to assess people too much each year if you did it by square footage to make up the difference that you're talking about. And do it by square foot rather than some magical kind of thing around use. So, you know, maybe you pay a hundred dollars into, um, the parking fee every year if you've got a one thousand square... I don't know what it is, but based on, based on the ratio.
And that would maintain...
Just make it an addition to your tax, tax base or whatever it would be.
Um, well, it would, it couldn't be that, but it would have to be a special assessment.
Right, but what I'm saying, it would be a...
A district, a special district assessment.
Flat across the board based on square footage.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's a good idea.
But, but key, key to, um, key to the difference, key to the difference between demand and, uh, use.
Do, do you know, and I know you talked about seventy-five times, did you get an overall flavor of feel? Did they tell you that, you know, there's a, there is a strong demand for parking downtown or there's just a slight demand or there's an excess or, do we know that? Do we know that answer?
I think that's what we need to figure out.
Well, I can give you an anecdotal answer.
I mean, you know, I don't know if we have that in a way that, if we have that answer in a systematic way that would be a...
Okay, so, okay.
I think you came up with a good way of looking at it. Portsmouth varies through the days, it becomes a different community. And I think the peak hours of use and everything else would probably give you a good indication. But if, I think we have succeeded in the sense that the downtown is still very much multiple use.
Right.
And where it does get a little complicated is at night when you've got a variety of uses coming together. Residents returning, existing residents and the downtown entertainment and those type of things.
The music hall, if they have an event, there isn't a parking place within half a mile.
It's a lot of business, perhaps not as much retail at one time. And so those all have different uses, uh, different needs rather.
Yeah. You could do it on shifts, you know, three, eight hour shifts in a day. And if you use up two of those, your assessment is twice the current use if somebody uses up one.
My guess, my guess is it's based upon the discussion. What I'd like to do is, is conclude at nine, but at least hit each one. And I think at this point, we could probably spend the two hours on, so we'll, I guess if it's okay with the board, we'll take kind of a summary of each one and then I'm assuming there'll be a follow-up meeting maybe with...
I think we've got enough here so that we can plot a, plot a direction.
Okay, the next couple would be somewhat easier, I think. And these would really be outside the downtown. The first one is the concept of a reserved parking area. And what that means is you have your minimum parking area requirement. So you're, if somebody's doing a, a store or office building somewhere on Route One and you've got your minimum parking requirements, but at that point, the, for whatever reason, the developer feels because of particular use requirements, they don't need all those parking spaces. This would allow the planning board to essentially permit fewer parking spaces to actually be constructed, but to have on the site plan a reserved parking area designated that would support those additional, the spaces that you didn't build. So that in the future, if the use changed or, or conditions changed, you could actually, you had a place to put those parking spaces. And one of the advantages of this obviously is you've got open space and, you know, percolation, groundwater and all the good environmental things rather than pavement, microclimate issues and all that sort of thing. So it's a way to, to address a temporary need, but to have on your site plan the provision for the ultimate number of parking spaces.
Mr. Covial.
I think the best word for that would be hallelujah. I mean, I'm just thinking of the mall, I mean, the parking lot size for Christmas shopping.
Right, Black Friday or whatever.
Who cares if, you know, for a couple of weeks a year in the wintertime, they park on a snowed-in lot, you know, that gets plowed.
Well, that's actually, that's actually the next, the next point. Because that's something they do voluntarily and we're not requiring them to do. You know, they're going, they may be overparking right there. This is actually saying underparking, you can provide less parking than is required. We allow you to do it, but we allow you to do it only if you show on your site plan that you can accommodate that future parking if you should require it. So it kind of gives you a nicer, nicer appearance, more environmentally friendly.
Good way to do it.
Uh, just, does that, anybody see any issues with that? A no-brainer? Okay.
No, I think, I like that, that if push comes to shove, you can provide them, but don't necessarily need to.
Okay. So the next one is actually the little, maybe a little bit more complicated is establishing a maximum parking ratio. So if you have, if you're saying one space, you know, one, you need four, you need four parking spaces per thousand square feet, then you might say that you can only have, you know, four point eight parking spaces per whatever it is. You can only go a certain, a certain amount above that ratio. And so you, that would get at your, your issue about, you know, provide, planning for the worst case scenario.
Is this an issue?
Well, I, I, I recall Bo, I don't know if I should, well, there was an application off of Borthwick Avenue where the parking was, you know, four per hundred. They ended up putting seven per hundred because based upon today's logistics, four didn't work. I, I'm quite certain it was, it was Borthwick. And I guess my question is, the requirements we have now, has anybody done recent studies? Is that in fact current? Does it do the thing?
We're going through all that.
Yeah, that's the process.
We're going, we're going line on by line at them, but we want to, but for example, I guess the, the issue that, and I don't know whether this is the case or not because I didn't look at the site plan, but, you know, like a Walmart or something like that seems like there's an awful lot of parking there. And I don't know whether that, they have, are providing more than they were required to provide or, um, yeah.
But wouldn't that, wouldn't that be a great case for, for greener development? That where Jokers used to be, make that all green. Gee, we find we're busting out at the seams, fine, take a roll parking.
Yep.
I mean, to me, that, that reserved parking area is just a great way to go. So, and maybe as the years go by and fuel goes up, maybe they'll, they'll use less.
With the maximum parking ratio, you're also making a policy statement that we're aware of these issues and we have a mechanism to deal with it. If you want to put in a lot more parking, well, you're going to have to work for it and justify it. And on the reserved parking, I could see that, for example, being very significant if you're on a, like a coast bus route. Even going beyond some of these situations.
Sounds like there's not a lot of controversy about either of these.
No, I, I do like that, that greener development.
Gee, we're going to have plenty of time to go back to number one. That'll be a fun discussion.
Okay, this is a little bit, this is a tricky one. This office, uh, business professional medical offices. Medical offices, um, require more parking than non-medical offices because of the nature of their activity and because there's, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of people going in for short periods of time and seeing multiple people. And so there's a lot of, a lot of people in there. And what happens is, and I understand this happens, it happens other places and I understand it happens here too, is that a building might originally be built for a regular business office purpose and then somebody wants to put medical offices in there and all of a sudden, they no longer have enough parking. And because the building was built out to the maximum buildout for the lot using the, the lower parking requirement, they have to go get a variance for the, for the medical, in order to convert it into a medical office because they can't get the spaces onsite. And so there's a number of ways you can address this. And I've listed three of them here. One is you could basically make a more stringent requirement for all medical offices and then allow the non-medical offices to get out of it essentially through that reserved parking area so that they would have that area to expand into in the future. And what that would do is it would lower the buildout for, for non-medical offices. So that that's, that could be a negative, a negative, it's definitely a negative impact for the property owner. Whether you see it as a negative impact for the city or not is, is another question. Another one is possibly to require the medical office parking ratio and then require basement level parking for all new buildings, you know, basically get them... You know, basically get them, they basically use the land, use the area under the building for parking so that you have, um, so you get the same amount of build-out on the lot, um, but you're, you're using land underneath. The issue there is that increases the development cost for the, for the developers, so that is, is-
Not increasing the amount of impervious-
You know, increasing the amount of impervious surface proportionally, right. The third, the third one is no change. Um, you know, we just continue doing what we now, rely on variances. Just understand that we're going to have variances that come up as these things happen. And, um, if it's, you know, the extent to which, make a judgment call as to whether it's a, it's a serious problem and if it's not, if it's not a major problem, if it's just kind of an annoyance, or, uh, just, just live with it. Um, and then I've got other, in case you had any other good ideas. So-
Coviallo.
I'm not shy. I like, I like number one because I think that the, the non, the medical people, like, like residential downtown will demand parking or else they won't move in there. And so, we'll know, that'll be their argument to the department saying, "We need to build bigger than what your minimum is because we are putting medical in here." And, uh, otherwise, I don't think they'll come. I think you, you see the complaints from, um, the medical office building on Borthwick that doesn't have enough parking. I think those tenants, they probably have a hard time filling up that building now if they don't put in more parking.
Yeah, I think Jackson Gray just expanded their, their parking lot and thankfully they had the land, though.
Yeah.
They had to buy it. Well-
I must be confused. Is that what number one actually means? What you just said, Tony, I'm not getting that for number one.
What number one means, if, if right now you require, I mean, a typical thing, and I, I don't remember this numbers, but typical thing is four, four parking spaces per thousand for non-medical offices and five spaces per thousand for medical. So, this would say all office buildings have to provide five spaces per thousand, but, but you could use that reserved parking area if you didn't, you know, that reserve parking area provision if you didn't need it.
But that seems to be going in the opposite way. That's why I'm not-
Well, that's the issue. That's how you get away, so, I mean, it's, it's a quandary because, um, if you, if you do it the way we do it now, then basically, what, how, what is the variance? Is the variance for eating into the open space? Is that what happens?
Well, the variance is actually, well, it could be a variety of situations.
It could be several things. It could be, um, for the use, it could be for the number of parking spaces, it could be for reducing your open space, could be all of them.
Yep, yep. So, it's a, it's, you know, it's an issue of, it would be, if you have this situation and if you grant variances, then, um, then you would have the issue of you've, you've have, you may lose the open space that you thought you were going to have. You may have more congestion, you may have people parking on the street that you didn't expect to have, um, sort of thing.
But didn't we have a study come to us in conjunction with the Borthwick Forest that showed how we were pretty well, um, set with medical office space for the next twenty-five years or something like that? So, wouldn't we be sacrificing an awful lot of land to pavement for something that we might not need if we went with number one?
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, I misread number one.
There's a possible, that may be possibly true, but what gets me, Lucy, you can help me with the name, but you know where FedEx is?
Yep, um, Griffin Drive.
Griffin Drive. That was supposed to be at one time, and it was going to be all industrial office building. Yet there's a surprising amount of medical down there.
Right.
And then, uh, Borthwick Avenue, uh, the Jackson Gray went in. It was actually on a standard where we did parking based on the number of physicians, and, which allowed for a very small area, but then practices expanded. And their only solution was actually to buy a lot of property and put in the parking. The two office buildings that went in, the first uses were doctors, so eventually they ran up to it. We base our parking on the actual building permit application, which says what the use is. And the change in use, if it's allowed, will actually start to fill that area. This sort of challenges, number one sort of challenges you, if you're really going to be heading to the med, to a medical, then you're going to be providing that parking from the get-go. Whereas if you're doing something that isn't as intensive, then you may be inclined to say, "I don't need all that parking, so I'll set up a reserve area." So, I could see how it could function. And I don't know if we have enough, you know, there, the studies I'm seeing are saying we need more doctors.
Especially as we get older.
Yeah.
Mr. Coviallo and Ms. Roberts.
The planning department would be pushing non-medical, saying, you know, "You really don't need to build that, that lot that big," wouldn't they, or no?
You can't, you don't really get into that, do you?
We only see them after, you, first time you see it is when you're building the building. And we're used to pretty much just about everyone wanting to max out on the site, every, because it's so expensive.
And I take back, I don't like number one.
That's the problem. That's the problem.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's what I was going to say, is I just, I don't want to encourage further matching out of parking. And we, we need to-
Well, maybe we go to three, no change.
Denominate.
What about two? Uh, the objection there is it costs more, but does anybody have an idea in a four-story building how much one level of underground parking costs?
Underground's expensive.
Oh, I know it's expensive, but in total cost of the building-
And we're talking underground, not first floor, right?
Well, underground, basement, I'm thinking.
Literally under the ground.
Underground, yeah.
I mean, because I, I, first floor would be unacceptable.
Underground, I said.
It sounds like, it's kind of like three and four. It, it's not the problem with the, uh, with the current thing, it's the problem with the way we're running. That we're granting these, these variances where we shouldn't be.
It's a difficult thing. I mean, you just can, you know, if somebody comes in and they, they tell you that their use is no longer feasible for some reason, you know, the zoning board has to make its decision.
The use, the use, by the way, is permitted. It's the parking.
Yeah.
In other words, in that district, you could have the business office and you can have a clinic. Well, you know, whatever else plays out when you're before the BOA, well, I need five more parking, there'll be a lot more than that. I need X number more, so I need relief from that.
And as a statement of fact, the, um, the variances are granted some eighty-five percent of the time, so, I mean, why do we even have zoning?
Now, that's a discussion for another day.
That is, you're right.
And actually, I think, I think the Board of Adjustment and Defense has taken a very active role on the differences between the dimensional variance and use variance. But where Don does have a point on this is not a use variance, it's dimensional. And I think Bob would agree, the standard is a little lower on that.
It's easier to get a dimensional variance, but absolutely intentionally, that's the way it's supposed to be.
Hey, we didn't say it was easy.
No, we just jump on. I mean, it's, it helps that you're-
It's definitely not one of-
Scratching your heads as much as we are.
Although, Tony, were you in favor of one? I wasn't clear.
No, he changed.
He does the asking, we support it.
He jumped in as quickly as he jumped out. It was hard done, this.
Okay, this last one is, is, is an interesting one. Uh, just think about Route One, think about Lafayette Road and think about, uh, the general business districts. And we've got all of these, these relationships between front yards, side yards, parking buildings and so forth. And, um, looking at the front of the building, between the building and the street, um, one option is that you require part, uh, off-street parking to be behind the front yard. So, the front yard can't be used for parking. Another option is to say that parking can't be between the street and the building, which is that pulls, gives you that, um, supports that policy of trying to pull the building closer to the street, make it more pedestrian-friendly to the extent that you can, and basically put parking to the sides and behind. So, those are, you know, A and B are kind of two different degrees of how you deal with the front. Uh, and then similarly, C and D are two different degrees of how you deal with the side and rear. Uh, right now, you could, you can essentially have, and Lucy or David, correct me if I'm wrong, you could essentially have a corridor of green space along the front and then you could have continuous building and parking behind that frontage, right?
Correct.
And so, you, so there's no separation. So, so you basically have, you know, street, two strips of green, however wide they are depending on the, on the business, on the district. And then behind that, no restrictions at all. Some communities require that parking be set back five feet or ten feet from the lot line, on the side or rear lot line. So, you have these buffer areas, except for areas where you interconnect the lots, uh, for, for connecting between lots. Um, and some require that you have, you know, even deeper setbacks at side yards. So, you, you have, your, your yards create this envelope. And the question is whether it creates a building envelope or a development envelope or some, some merger of those two things. Uh, and, and it really is a, it has to do with how you envision the future development, redevelopment of those types of highway cor, especially, especially the, something like Lafayette Road, which has a lot of potential for redevelopment. Any, any thoughts or, yeah?
Question, Mr. Ross.
Like, under B, should off-street parking be allowed between principal building and the street? Are you talking a commercial building?
Yes, a commercial building and a, in a business area. So, if you had, so if you're trying to make, you know, it's one of those things about making the rest of the, of the city as nice as, as a pleasant place as the downtown. One of the things about the downtown is you've got buildings closer to the street. And one of the things we were talking about when we talked about form-based zoning and those sorts of things is trying to, trying to bring, create more of a street edge with the, with the buildings and, and put parking behind the way you would normally do in a, in a, in an older urban area, um, as opposed to the suburban strip that you have now with the buildings behind and the, and the, and the parking lot in front. So, item B basically would be, we're changing our policy. We're turning it, we're, we're basically saying, this is, we don't want this to be the suburban strip. We want this to be a, you know, a more, um, defined street line.
Did you have a question, Paige?
Um, no, I guess I was just going to say that I agree with that policy of, um, limiting or prohibiting, uh, parking between the building and the street for that reason, to follow up on some of the things we've already talked about. Um, and I guess if we're, we're, we're talking of the business, um, a business zone, then I, I wonder really what would be the point of having a, a setback from a side or rear lot in terms of parking? I mean, uh, you know, I don't know, some kind of auto park next to McDonald's, like, why does it matter? There's one thing if it's residential. Um, but I guess I don't really see why it would be necessary. And, you know, we want to obviously make it not as difficult for people, you know? I mean, some of these lots are difficult enough to build on, probably.
Only problem, though, is if you don't have anything, you could have asphalt to asphalt on the lot line, in which case, uh, you might not have achieved every goal. But perhaps it may be that you want to have some separation, but also allow some incursion into it. So, like you say, the lots are a little easier to develop. Um, I think you had a good description. We put out a building footprint. Do you want that building footprint to include the parking, which then limits the building? Or should we have a building footprint and then limit where the parking can, can be so you maintain some semblance out there and trying to find that balance?
Heard it.
Mr. Rice, go ahead.
Yep.
Where do special exceptions and variances come into play here? I mean, there might, there might be a case where it's, it, it might make sense. But I, um, speaking from, uh, prior experience, I don't see how you develop a streetscape, number one, how you maintain a quality streetscape.
If you have variances.
Uh, with, with allowing off-street parking in front yards and, uh, in front of the principal building in the street. I also see the potential for destruction of green space as well.
Mr. Coviallo.
I totally agree. And I wonder, um, one of the goals was to try to get connectivity of parking in the back to the adjacent lots. And that, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a part of the setback for the parking, would it?
No, typically when you do that, you actually say, except for, except for connections between lots. So, you basically, you know, and it, it may not be, it may be a very minimal thing like a ten-foot buffer or maybe a, you know, a more substantial thing.
But I think that's most important because you, you, in a sense, create another road behind the, behind the lots. And, which is, I think, what we all like. That's what we like about the home-people area. So, you can kind of sneak through there because they're all connected.
So, so what are you saying about these, about these options? Are you saying that-
That we ought to not have it in the front, um, push it in the back so we can get, we can develop-
To the back and the, and the rear or the sides. I think we had talked about Lafayette Road. I think, Chris, you always have a gateway to the, there's a term you use.
Right. Well, it's a gateway to the city.
Corridor.
Gateway to the city, and, and again-
Someday, we hope it will be a gateway to the city.
But I think that's- I think that's the way to do it, is to keep the front, keep the front green. Park in the back, park in the rear, you know, on the sides, so. I think there's good, good consensus.
I hadn't thought about the visual picture of what Dave just described, though. I mean, maybe there is some setback on the side to the front because, you know, if you just had a whole bunch of cars lined up between a McDonald's and an auto parts a little off the street, that might be worse than having some people parking in front of the auto parts store. So, I, it feels like there needs to be some, something about the side as well. I hadn't been thinking about that, um, so that you're not, you're not doing that wall-to-wall cars.
It could be something like, uh, this, the required setback or yard would not be intruded upon or you can intrude upon it X percent for parking. Perhaps play with that.
Yeah. Well, we, I mean, I, I get the general sense is that there's, there seems to be, unless, nobody has spoken up to say they don't like the idea of restricting parking in front of the buildings, but maybe somebody doesn't. Uh, but that seems to be, B seems to have a fair, fair amount of, of support. And the question, a little bit more ambivalence and maybe some disagreement with C and D, yeah.
I just look at the, uh, where the Margarita Plaza is, how different that would look if those buildings were pulled up two hundred feet.
Yep.
And you had a bigger, I look at those trees every spring, all the salt, the sand, and they kind of seem to spring to life every year. I don't know how, but that would have a much different look to it if, if more of the parking were in the side and the rear. And I think it would be a hu, well, uh, yeah, it would look quite different, I'll put it that way. So, uh, Ms. Gifford.
And actually, to that point, I mean, if you think about some of the spaces we've got, we've got, you know, if you look at the Meadowbrook development and how the buildings are situated on that site and what would look different if this was in place, it'd be interesting.
Very different.
Um, same thing, we've got Yocans, that old site, you know, and that would be, again, you'd just be creating a greenscape, so.
Mr. Coviallo.
And I, I just thought of something when she, when she mentioned that. In a sense, we've kind of created a, uh, uh, an anti-overdevelopment because right now, they can move things around so much. You're tying your hands a little bit that if they push them up front, like the Meadowbrook is an example, where they tried to fit so many things on the lot, but they had to push things to the perimeter, to the, to the outline so they could get, uh, the parking in the center. Whereas if we had this, probably couldn't have nearly as many structures on the site.
We've got to be careful with that, too, because at some point, it comes to, it's just not feasible to do it. So, you don't want to become a city that says, "Oh, we can't afford to develop here." But I, I, I think we're going in the right direction, absolutely.
And one thing that's related to that, excuse me, is, is that, you know, we've talked periodically, from every few months, we talk about design, building design standards and so forth. And we've, we've still been, still been working with that and, uh, and we're, you know, we're, there, there are different problems on Isidyn Street than there are on Lafayette Road. But we're still looking at this. And I think, you know, the idea of having a special, uh, a special treatment for the Lafayette Road corridor is, is something that really seems to be the easiest thing to do. Rather than try to have a one-size-fits-all or a very complicated review process, we're going to be looking very carefully at, at the design standards along Route One because that seems to be a, an area that has potential for a lot of change because a lot of older uses that could be removed. And it also has, you know, potential for good change, bad change, so.
Any other questions on?
I think Paige had something.
Did you have a question?
Um, I was just going to raise pervious pavement yet again.
Yes.
I kind of thought if we talk about parking, I had to just throw it out there, be sure that was some, somehow like in the mix. Um, you know, thinking of these big lots, hadn't thought of Yocans, but the redevelopment of particularly those big lots, if we can really push that pervious-
Just a quick question.
Mr. Coviallo.
Uh, you're a contractor.
I don't live downtown.
What is the difference in cost? Because Paige makes a good point. We've always talked about this, but we've always heard that it's too expensive. Curiosity question. What is the difference between asphalt and pervious, a square foot? Twenty-five percent more?
It's impossible to answer. It's impossible to answer.
It depends on square footage, it depends on the use, it depends on a thousand.
Depends on the soil type.
So, um-
So, it's really a site-specific?
There is, there is a seminar, I, I believe it's June twelfth, um, that I'm going to up in Summersworth. And they're actually going to have a four-hour seminar at UNH at their Stormwater Center. Um, I'd, what I'd like to see at some point is, could we get somebody from, from UNH to either come here and speak to us? Or could we do a little field trip? I mean, everybody always asks, and I don't think anybody's, they've got quite a center at UNH there.
And we did it several years ago, but it might be a good time to do it again.
There's enough people that want to know that we could educate ourselves.
Yeah, another thing is the technology is changing. You know, several years ago, uh, one place that's done a lot of study on this is the Chesapeake Bay project. They've done a lot of work, uh, on that. And they were, they were basically saying that even the pervious things, they weren't counting as pervious because they, they filled up, they silted up, uh, and so forth. Or, or, you know, in cold areas, if you're salting or something like that, you'd have all sorts of things going on with them. So, but it may be that things are changing and they're coming up with new products and so forth that maintain their perviousness. The problem with the perviousness is they, pervious materials is, they've got holes that fill up. So, if you have dirt, if you have any dirt on your car, it's going to make it gradually less pervious. And so, it's one, it's a big maintenance thing.
Yeah, and there's many different.
John, can I make a comment to Rick? As, as I'm listening to a lot of this stuff tonight, Rick, it really is sounding to me like more the grist for the site review mail than zoning ordinances. And this stuff could be, a lot of this could go in a, and might be more appropriate to go in a site review regulation.
I think that, I might, I can't even recall. It seems to me that pervious may be in the site review, but, yeah, yeah. Need to check that, but you're right, that, that definitely is. But some of these things where you're saying- But some of these things where you're saying, if you're defining, I, one of the things, one of the hard lines that I feel is a hard line between zoning and site review, is if you have a setback requirement, I really feel that is like a zoning thing, so if you're saying cars can't be any closer than this to our lot line, that's like a dimensional requirement, which really seems zoning-related in some ways. And I may be wrong on that, but that's just what I...
Well, there's a crossover, I guess is my point, and, and on some of this, you know, we're already going to have a 200-page zoning ordinance, so the extent that you can...
I can make the font smaller.
Some of this, some of this could be slid in the site review regulations where the planning board has more latitude to deal with it. It might be a good idea.
Well, you know, you recall, we tried to do that, we were trying to do that with lighting, and we moved it all into site review, and then we moved it all back into zoning, and so you say, it's, you know, what are you, what are you going to catch, what are you not going to catch? So it's, it's a difficult thing.
That's why we're doing them both together.
The one thing, I guess the one question I'd ask, maybe it doesn't exist, is there a parking, you may know, Rick, is there a parking guru that we could have pay a fee and just say, "Assess our downtown"? What is our parking?
There is a guy who I would love you to talk to, he's, he's actually in Cambridge, he works, he doesn't, he used to work for Cambridge, then he went out to the West Coast and worked for a consulting firm, he's back in the Boston area working for a consulting firm, and his specialty is downtown parking. He was, he's really, I think his name is Jason Schreiber, but I'll get, I'll get his contact, he would love to come up and, you know, he, he really, and he talks about these parking district things, and...
I mean, to me, I think we're, we're trying to make decisions on something that, you know, with Don's term, squishy, is that your term?
Squishy, yeah, squishy.
Right, but I, I just feel like, I don't really have a handle, you know, if we impose these five years from now, do we have so much in the coffers and we've got gobs of parking that, you know, it doesn't seem fair to...
And, and we've got so much on the horizon, I mean, we haven't even brought up McIntyre, you know, when you start thinking of what we have potentially on the horizon for parking...
That's a really good point.
For development and parking.
Exactly, exactly.
All ameliorated by the fact that fuel prices are going up and up and up, which means there will probably be fewer cars on the road.
So, I mean, if somebody could kind of look at that multifaceted, faceted matrix and say, you know, you're in good shape with, with what you have, great, or, boy, in 10 years, you're going to have a glut, or...
And if they say you're in good shape, then you take the actions to preserve that shape.
Absolutely.
Yeah, which is where we got to figure it out.
But that's something I'd really like to see before we guess Councilor.
Well, I want to raise one other thing, and I made it note at the beginning, you know, the Economic Development Commission has had a lot to say about, in the past, about the credits and whatever, and there are probably other people who need to be in this discussion, because weren't they really the ones who recommended the fee, size the fee and all of that?
Where we're heading with this is, with what you've given us, is to initiate that type of discussion, and it is going to involve other partners.
But that's why a study makes sense, because it involves all these other partners, not just this board.
It's an amazingly complex subject.
And it's one that, if you miss one little slice of it, it can just go, it seems like it can really get out of control, but we want to keep the downtown residents happy.
Oh, yes, that's a very good idea. I will do anything if you keep Parrot Avenue free.
Is there any other comments? I, I think, I think we achieved what I was hoping we'd achieve, is skip through it, I think you've given staff and Rick plenty to do, if there's, I don't know if we want to... We're fishing at what we do. So, Mr. Coviallo.
Totally separate issue, if we're ready for something else.
Are we, are we all set with, with the parking? I sense that we are, so yes, we are.
I don't know if we're coming to a close on the number of meetings we're having. I talked to you via email about attendance, this meeting, this is coming from a person who missed the last two work sessions due to family stuff, but could we have a discussion about attendance, what is expected, or has that occurred in the last two?
I don't believe it has.
No, no.
I, and I bring it up because I had to, I had to miss the last two, and I just thought that, looking at the future meetings going up, there's a huge amount of meetings that we're being asked to come to, and I think it'd be good to know personally, what, what is, or what are the thoughts of the, the chair on the issue of attendance and stuff like that? Obviously, we all try to come to as many meetings as possible, but it's just, it's difficult when we're meeting every Thursday.
My personal opinion as a chair, I, it may not be the staff's position, but I think, be careful how I say this, I feel that everybody that shows up to either a public hearing or a work session, it's not the first time they've opened that plan. I think we've come extremely well-prepared, I would base it on public hearings, that's what I signed up for, one, you know, one Thursday a month. As my kid said to me tonight, "Dad, is it tonight the third Thursday?" Chuckle, but that, that's just my personal opinion, that make what you can, I think public hearings are really important, that's just my opinion, I don't know what staff thinks or...
I think the board is doing a commendable job getting there, and we, we understand that there are sometimes in every board member, perhaps more than one occasion, the regular meeting is probably the key one.
Yeah, okay.
But we find your input so useful, and the reason we're trying to do this is because we're trying to complete the goals that we've set out. So as long as board members can make it, you're contributing, you're helping, and it's very important. We are planning to take a fair amount of time off in the summer, we might redefine when summer starts slightly, but we're making some good progress here. I will admit that the 29th, we were trying to hold free, because it was so close to Labor Day. We weren't expecting that, that we'd do that Joint Conservation Commission walk, and we owe it to them to get that done, so we took advantage of that one, otherwise that was planned to be a bit of a breather, and I think we can try to keep that to a minimum.
Yeah, I didn't think we were having a problem, I just thought, sometimes, I know for me, sometimes you get a little stressed, like, another Thursday, but, so I just wanted to get a feel.
I'd like to just say that, you know, as, from the point of view of working on the ordinance, it's really extremely helpful to me to talk to you about this, and, you know, it's, it's a, we're trying to race to get this thing done, and, you know, trying to, trying to meet yet another deadline, not let deadlines slip anymore, and it's, it's very helpful to, to talk with you, but we certainly understand that you have lives, and you're not getting paid to be here, so that, so that's, we appreciate that.
When I met with the mayor, oh, a couple of, three, four months ago, we agreed would, would really try to ramp up for, you know, February, March, April into May, June, July and August, summers are so short, we said, "You know what, let's be fair to everybody that, you know, that family vacation," so we tried to ramp up, hopefully slow down the end of May, June, July, August, take it easy, and then in September, pick back up and finish by the end of the year, and I, and I think we're on track to do that, so, you know, whatever meetings we can make, let's make them, and if you can't...
We are bleeding a little bit into June, but it's minimal.
That's fine.
And we want, and we, we don't want you to feel that, that you're not being consulted on important issues, and these are, these are, some of these things we've been talking about tonight are pretty important issues.
You know, we might make an assumption that this looks easy, we look at it, and we realize there are all these issues, and then like, Councilor Dwyer points out, well, the EDC also has an important view, and we've got other staff, but we're doing a good job.
And one, and one last comment is, I mean, personally, and I might be the only one with this opinion, I wouldn't mind going longer and less.
True, absolutely.
Having, having three one-hour meetings, to me, I'd prefer, you know, one three-hour meeting.
Yeah, I was just about to say that, of course, you know, I, I'm used to these